Good evening. I'm hereby calling to order the November 13, 2023, community hall meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballastrea.
President.
Mr. DeJohn.
Here.
Mr. Mano.
Here.
Mr. Monaco.
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mrs. Tressi.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of the meeting this evening is to discuss the following: healthcare benefits of Mayfield Heights employees as well as change managements to the Aquatic Community Center project. At this time, I will now introduce Renee Augustine, our HR Director, and she will introduce you to Natalie from the Fidelity Group.
Good evening. I wanted to introduce you to Natalie Locatour, who is from the Fidelity Group, and she is our Client Services Manager on our account or Vice President of I'm downgrading her title. So Natalie joins us every month for our Healthcare Committee meeting and has helped us through our renewal process. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
It might be helpful if you guys just walked us through, walked everybody through, what the renewal process was, how really this all started and how the mechanics of it.
Okay, so you received my memo and we reviewed renewals for the medical and prescription drug coverage. Originally, we had a 5.5% renewal increase from OGBC Medical Mutual. So OGBC is the consortium we're in with some other cities. And we were able to negotiate that down to 4%. Karen was very instrumental at the finance meeting or the board meeting at OGBC. So we got that down to 4%. And outside of OGBC, Medical Mutual quoted us, I think it was 21.4%. So obviously, we wanted to stay in there. We did have some renewals from some other companies and they were very attractive, as you can see in the memo. But what we've found is that these companies will give us this very attractive rate and then incrementally increase it every year. And then in about year three or four, it's extremely large increase. So we've had about a 5% average increase for OGBC since we've had them in 2019. And then our trend for dental increases is similar. We noticed that they give us very attractive rates in the beginning and then go up incrementally. And that same thing happened with Cigna this year. So then we went out and got renewals and Delta Dental gave us a pretty attractive renewal at a negative 4.1% for a two-year rate guarantee. And our vision insurance stayed flat and the group's been happy with them, so we did not shop that. So the Healthcare Committee voted on the OGBC Medical Mutual of Ohio at a 4% increase with a one-year rate guarantee. Dental insurance with Delta Dental at a negative 4.1% with the two-year rate guarantee. And vision insurance with iMed with no increase for one year.
I will recuse myself from this discussion, so Mrs. Tressi will take over.
Mr. Ballastrea.
Renee, have you ever proposed anything longer than one-year guarantees or the insurance companies not do that? I noticed this year you have the dental giving you a two-year guarantee, but not medical or beyond that. Do they ever?
We haven't seen that in a long time, but Natalie can probably answer that better.
Yes, sometimes they do that, but the OGBC, you're in the OGBC program, they don't have that. I'm seeing a lot of medical carriers move away from that. Medical Mutual did that a few years ago. They did this like blanket two-year renewal at 9%. Unfortunately, a lot of those groups that got that 9% for two years got a steep increase the following year. So I haven't seen it from any other insurance carriers at this time.
Okay, great, thank you.
We would love that, though.
I know, I would love that, too. Good question.
Never hurts to try.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Mr. Monaco.
Renee, I have a couple of questions. Number one, do you get health insurance through the city?
Do I?
Yes.
Yes.
And you put this package together, right?
I work with the Healthcare Committee, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. The second question is, have you done the studies of study of other cities in the surrounding area to find out how many cities are paying the full annual deductible for HRA?
That I have not studied, but that is something that's negotiated through our contracts, our collective bargaining agreements.
Hi, sir. So I know that the city hasn't done a study, but we have provided a report called the Labor Toolkit. We currently, at the Fidelity Group, represent over 33 municipalities in northeast Ohio. And we provided some information there regarding what types of plans the other cities offer, including some HRAs. I would say HRAs are not as predominant as HSAs or traditional PPOs, but we did provide some data in that Labor Toolkit to Renee and her team showing how much employers do offer towards HRA in terms of contemporary cities in the area.
Could we be provided with that?
Sure, absolutely. I'll send Renee tomorrow morning another PDF copy and she can forward to the council.
So I'd like to make a motion to put this on a first reading so that we can visit that and
I'll move.
So we have a motion and a second to leave this on first reading.
So can I say anything?
I have a question, so yeah, go ahead.
So Mr. DeJohn has a question.
Do you want to go first or?
No, you can, go ahead.
So obviously, it's dictated by whatever the union contract says. So when the new contract comes up for 2024, how does all of that work with what we're doing tonight?
Well, we negotiate with each union different aspects of the collective bargaining agreements and the healthcare information is in that agreement.
I understand that, but what if you negotiate higher deductibles in the union contract for 2024?
We could try that. I mean, we can suggest anything, but I don't know what'll pass or be settled.
Yeah, so are you setting a precedence by us passing this now? And then the contract comes up later. I've always wondered why it wasn't done together. And maybe you can answer that for me.
I think I can address that just from the labor aspect also. What we were talking about, the labor unions, she's not going to be able to talk about the collective bargaining.
Well, she can tell me what's happening in other cities.
Okay.
And then you can, go ahead, Mrs. Fagan.
Sure, so when there's years that you're not in labor negotiations, there's no changes typically made to contributions or deductibles and the whatnot. So we typically see cities that will have labor negotiations at different times of the year. So for example, in the spring, in the summer, whenever it may be. At that time, we often offer decrement to cities and show them what the potential savings could be, right? Of your current plan with your current carrier if we increase deductibles. So at that time, they can utilize that information. That's the whole purpose of the Labor Toolkit report that we put together annually. We put it together even if there aren't labor negotiations, but I digress. So going back, you can utilize those during labor negotiations and then potentially make those changes for the following year. So they wouldn't be made right now, but they would be discussed during labor negotiations, provided potential average savings, and then they could be made for 2025. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Fagan, was that what you wanted?
That's exactly what I was going to say, it was just the timing aspect. Because we don't know when those labor contracts will be settled, it's hard to make the change for the next year. It would be a change for '25 that we would be negotiating into the contracts. And we are just starting those negotiations now, as a matter of fact, with all the unions.
So we have a motion and a second to leave on, go ahead, Mr. DeJohn. Mr. DeJohn, do you have another question?
That's all right, let's keep it on.
Mr. Monaco.
So I really don't understand. So if we need to change this one way or the other, is that going to be through the union or through the council here? Through the union. So really, there's nothing that we can even do tonight. I mean, if it's already in a contract with the union, then we have to abide by it, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Acting Chair. What council is doing tonight is voting on the best deal that we can get for health insurance right now. That's what you're voting on. Whether deductibles are changed or any portion of contributions are changed in the negotiations, that's for negotiations. But right now, council's voting on the best deal we could get for healthcare right now, based on, you know, the team and what they've found and, you know, what they've negotiated with companies. So I mean, if we want our employees to have healthcare, I mean, I don't think there's a reason to vote against it.
Well, I'm not planning on voting against it. I'm just trying to find out, you know, I like to get some information that I know we are getting the best deal. And, you know, without, you know, knowing what other cities are contributing to the employees' HRA, without knowing, you know, other programs from other companies, I really can't make an educated guess here.
But what other cities are contributing is not in this. That is in labor negotiations. That's not part of this deal.
Well, and can I just say, when you buy car insurance, you might have the same car insurance company, but yours is completely different. So it's hard to compare other cities with our city because of our demographics. That's the age of our employees and the dependents. That's the health issues that the employees and their dependents have. That's the ZIP codes that our employees live on or live in. That is our plan design, so everything is different. So it's very difficult to compare other cities to ours in insurance.
It is for a layman like me, but if you talk to a professional, which I have access to, I think I can get the right answer.
Well, the Fidelity Group does guide us.
So really, I think, I don't know if this provides any clarity. We were able to get a 4% renewal with Medical Mutual through the OGBC program. We went to other insurance companies, United Healthcare, Aetna, Anthem, Cigna. We did get quotes from them as well. Some of them seems more competitive dollars-wise. Our concern about moving away from MMO is that sometimes those insurance carriers, and I can tell you from my professional experience, I've been doing this for 18 years, they will buy the business, okay? They will hook you in the first year and then second and third years, you'll get a very high increase. So I think what we were, you know, talking about was whether you were going to renew with Medical Mutual this year at the 4% through the OGBC. And, you know, it was basically, you know, as part of a consortium, you're having a balance there. As Renee mentioned, we've had 5% year increases year over year since you've been in the OGBC. Now, I think definitely we can even do a deeper dive into HRA contributions in the public sector world that could help you during your labor negotiations. We would be certainly happy to do that at the Fidelity Group. We have provided some information, but we could do an even deeper dive for you, I study. But that would, you know, to help with the labor negotiations in 2024.
Okay, well, I appreciate if you can add any information.
Yeah, absolutely, we will work on that, sure.
Madam President.
Mr. DeJohn.
So is there any cities that negotiate together with your union contracts and these renewals? No, could we have, in other words, could we have gone on every month just renewing with them? Every month and then waiting till the contract is settled?
No, no, they offer one-year renewal, one-year renewals. So you'd have to renew in January.
So are there any cities that, Mrs. Augustine, maybe? There's no cities that do this?
Month by month?
No. Have it at the same time that their union contracts are settled.
Oh, you mean the renewal negotiations during, not, I don't really know any. Just because it's like two different situations. Normally, the union negotiations happen at a different time, knowing that any changes that are agreed upon will take effect the following year. So like I said, I had cities that, you know, they do union negotiations all different times of the year. Sometimes they do do them at the end of this year, but perhaps they're not going to take its effect till much later. It's just, it's hard, I guess.
So our negotiations have to be 90 days from the, only 90 days prior to the term of the contract. And our insurance expires December 31st, so that's what makes it difficult.
And that's what I was asking, could you make it, you know?
Align it, yeah.
Yeah, align it till March 31st.
There's nothing.
Oh, you mean have your renewal?
Correct. So maybe we'd have a contract by then.
What's the correlation?
I don't know, I don't understand what you mean, sir. Like have the changes?
They're two different things.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, I can't speak really to when, you know, I just know what other cities do and they typically have union negotiations, not at the same time as renewal. I can't speak for all of them, some of them may, but again, they're done, yeah.
Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, just, they're two completely separate things. One has really nothing to do with the other, two completely different groups. But there is no sense in putting this on readings because you're not going to get any more information than you're getting right now to affect our rate that you are voting on. So, I mean, the rate is what they have negotiated, this is what we have, it's the best rate we can get. So putting it on readings, I don't think makes any sense. But it's just delaying it, delaying the inevitable.
So I do have a question for either or both of you. Are any of our surrounding Hillcrest municipalities in this consortium?
You mean city?
Lynn Hurst, Highland Heights.
Yep, there are cities, neighboring cities that are in the consortium.
So they're all in?
We have nine cities. I believe Renee provided, did you?
But it just has the city, city one, city two.
We had to de-identify the cities, but yes, I mean, there's a number of them in that. I also work with the city of Strongsville. There's, I'm trying to think, Willoughby is in the consortium. There's a number of them, there's about, I think there's nine now.
And some right here in our Hillcrest area as well.
Highland Heights is.
Highland Heights.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you, ladies. Diane, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tressi. All right, we will now turn the meeting over to Jason Noldy with the GPD Group to review the change managements to the Aquatic and Community Center project. Mr. Noldy, thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you again. We came to you in July of 2022 and we promised you, at that time, we put forth GMP number four for your review and approval and you gave us an approval and with that, we promised you a new state-of-the-art aquatic and community center by September of this year within a budget of $34.8 million total project costs. And I'm confident to say that we delivered on that. You know, it was not super easy, but I think we had a great team here that actually pulled that together. So we wanted to take this meeting to go through some of the financial reconciliation that's happening at the end of the project, give a quick overview on, you know, some of the final pictures that we have of the facility that hopefully everybody gets, has had the ability to enjoy and then turn it over for question and answers. We do anticipate this is going to go through a couple of readings, so you'll see that we're breaking this down into smaller pieces. So this is the first set of information that we're providing, but we are providing you what our anticipated overall final cost on the project would be. So a couple of images to share with you, again, with the new pools and slides. I think the feedback that we've heard has been tremendous and, you know, I hope that it stays that way for the foreseeable future. Some of the shade structures that you can see there as well. Our favorite part, you know, kids enjoying the facility actually. Some more of the pools and some dukes photos. You can see how it really glows at nighttime as well. And then with the community center itself, you know, reflecting upon the pool, the outdoor fireplace area, gathering area that we have off of the meeting rooms, the new gymnasium and waiting area outside, the senior fitness center area. And then looking down the concourse at the community meeting rooms and then of one of the meeting rooms themselves. So I wanted to break down, we came to you in March of this year. We kind of went through the overall spreadsheet and at that time indicated that we are starting that process of reconciling the final costs. So this updated tracker that was submitted with your information went back and compared it against the GMP number four that was approved in July of 2022. So that first column that's highlighted in light blue there indicates what we had at that time. And again, that cost, you'll see it in a second here. This was, the second column is what was approved at the most recent council meeting that we had. And then the last column would be what we are projecting the final cost to be. And then just to recap how that is set up, the first, yeah? I'm going to go forward with more information. So it's not intended to read all of the numbers. Off of here, I want to big picture, share with you how that, the format of the spreadsheet is set up.
Can you just read the last number at the bottom in three columns?
Yes, it'll be on the next slide.
Oh, on the next slide, okay.
Yeah, I get to the good stuff. So again, the way it's set up then, the GMPs are set up on top there. Anything that was previously approved in terms of change orders is the next bracket. There were provisions for the mayor or GPD, the owner's rep, to approve items under a certain threshold, that is, the next bracket. And then the stuff that we're bringing forward in terms of potential change orders that's on the current resolution is on the next bracket. With that in yellow are the ones that are still pending in our court that we have a placeholder for. Then down below are some of the soft costs. So we have the owner's contingency. As you can see, as far as, as part of this final reconciliation, we've zeroed that out to apply towards some of these change orders. We have what is called the FF and E costs, those are furniture, fixtures and equipment, which I'll break down. And then at the bottom there is the total project cost. And I think that's ultimately what we've been coming to council before is requesting approval to move something from the yellow bucket, from the soft costs, up to the green to facilitate or to add to Higley's contract. But we have not been changing the overall bottom line, the total project cost in any of this. So this is the blow-up of the last three lines, so you can read it a little bit better. The original GMP, or at the time of GMP number four, when we approved it, we had a total project cost at the bottom there of $34.408, $468. What we're projecting with the current change management plus what we have pending, our total project cost would be $34,61,319, which is almost $350,000 under the original budget that we had established in 2022. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but we're here to answer any questions that there may be. This is the list of change managements that is part of the package that we have before you. And then this is the breakdown of the soft costs. So you can see how that 820 totaled that went towards various owner-provided items that is part of a typical project. So that is part of the soft cost, the lower level bracket that we had. So with that, I'll turn it over to see if there may be any questions.
I guess I just have, if I can just start really quick. So is everything completed there?
Everything is not 100% completed, I would say 98%. But there are still some metal panels that had a delay in their fabrication that were still. And Brent or Gavin, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, so things to complete, there's two glass panels in the gym that had been problematic getting. We've got them a couple of times and it's been the wrong glass. So we're supposed to get the correct glass this Thursday, so we're keeping our fingers crossed on that. But we feel optimistic that we will. And then the metal panels, Jason mentioned. There was a conscious decision going into opening the pool and whether or not we were going to have all the metal panel on at that time. So we decided not to move forward with the metal panel in that pool area. What that did was, obviously it opened the pool for use, right? But they didn't allow us to finish that. So now we were able to measure the final work in place and then get the metal panel into fabrication. So we're supposed to get the balance of the metal panel this Thursday and then we'll start installing the balance with two crews. And then we're optimistic that we'll have that done by the end of the year. So, but there was a problem getting the final metal panel just because of the nature of the material that's involved with that. So that's all we have to do that's left from a work standpoint on the portico chair and the HSS beams between the two buildings. And then there's a little bit in that breezeway in the pool building, so.
And then as far as the playground goes and the cement work, like the sidewalk?
Yeah, so they're supposed to be coming Thursday, I believe, to do the surface. So everything's in, they're going to do the rubberized surface. And then what that'll allow us to do is come in and do the fence and the final landscaping around it, but we had to stay out of their way while they were doing that. So that should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks here as well.
So in all of this quote, or in these quotes, or not change orders, but what about the sidewalk? Is that in the original plan?
So.
I remember we, they've gone back and Because I remember we, they've gone back and forth with sidewalk.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the sidewalk may be deferred to a different method of installation outside of our contract.
So would that be kicked out of the original quote, that portion of it?
Yes.
Do you know how much that was?
Yeah, so there was a credit back to the project of approximately $54,000. I'd have to, I do have it here, but to account for the sidewalk that we did have in the project at the time. You know, we were pricing, expanding it, bringing it all the way down, Marsall there. So in lieu of doing it partially, as Gavin indicated, we were going to, in discussions, it was recommended that we push that down.
Okay, all right. Mr., thank you very much. Mr. Bellstraw.
Yeah, Jason, go back to the slide where you blew up the final, the numbers. You have the contingencies there with the delta and negative. Is that considered in the final cost? I mean, are there still contingencies that you haven't used that would still come back to the city as far as there's some fluff there? Or is this, is this the final balance that you're predicting?
The negative 347 is the projected final balance, I guess, that would go back to the city, so to speak. But we are applying any contingencies that we have in the project or allowances towards the change management to offset that. That's why we build those into the project.
Yeah, so those contingencies are being utilized in the bottom line right now?
Yes.
Right, okay. Not that they're, we're going to come back and say, hey, you know, we still have a balance that's due back to the city because we haven't utilized everything.
Yeah, when we, I mean, it's not like there's a check that goes back, but we're just not, we're not going to realize the full $34,408 million, so.
Thank you.
This is Tressi.
Jason, does this include, like, all of these extras, like the lighting or heat at the little Quonset hut storage thing?
Yes, this includes all of the known extras or changes that have, you know, added value that we've put into the project has all been accommodated with this.
So you're not ever coming back here for another change order?
So there are still some reconciliation that we're doing, but we're talking about a couple of thousand here, a couple of thousand there that will potentially change some of the numbers. I'm not saying that they're not going to change at all, but everything that is known is listed on here.
So I know everyone, the residents, well, you hear good and bad comments. Some people call it a monstrosity, other people love it. The people that have gone there really love the pool. It's a beautiful addition to the city. I, my, what I've heard is that the playground, an ADA playground, is right on that sidewalk. And the fence is going to go around the wires and the poles. Could it have been moved closer to the pool and not as close to the... I mean, when you were designing it, did anybody realize how close that ADA playground would be to the sidewalk or the curb? When you, when you look at the very first slide you showed us tonight, you can see from the black iron fence all the way to the yellow umbrellas, there's a tremendous amount of concrete. So could we have, you know, like, designed it and kept, maybe done 10 feet less of concrete and moved that playground? Because it is ADA, and then the fence would go right across the new sidewalk that, you know, we're proposing here.
Chris, do you want to answer that? I mean, from my perspective, I think one of the conscious things that we were trying to do with that playground and its location, two things. One is we were trying to maximize how much pool deck we had so that there is comfortable space for lounging around the pool and we don't feel cramped. And then secondly, that playground is like a linchpin between the Phase Two portion of this project that we want it to be shared. It's not exclusive to the aquatics, that it is, you know, that it... So I think those two things contributed, but Chris, if you want to add.
Good evening. Yeah, I think that Jason hit on it, is we were trying to maximize. The pool square footage was sort of a top priority. And then the playground came into it, but we didn't have it, it wasn't designed, right? We went through, got the GMP, did all the drawings, but we didn't know what the playground looked like. We didn't know the shape. We didn't know the fall zones, the safety zones. So at the end of the day, it was, you know, it was the remaining parcel, the remaining point between the sidewalk and the pool. And we integrated it with the picnic pavilion. And the designer did the eventual layout, and they maximized it as much as they could to get the equipment that you had, or you would have had to have done less to step it back. But we wanted to maximize the pool, maximize the playground apparatuses and opportunities there. So it was really trying to make the best of the site. And unfortunately, we did look at a study of the poles and trying to move them, and it would be way too expensive, and there's all kinds of reinforcing. That's why you have those tension cables. And it was just at the end of the day, too much. But we could have made the playground smaller, but that wasn't an objective either.
Right, I wouldn't want to see the playground smaller.
The whole site was a constant balance between the service center, the parking, the building, the pools, and the playground. And it was a juggling act, and, you know, compromises had to happen.
I just, I have a question. I just don't see there being a sidewalk able to be built in front of all of that.
Yeah, they can get an input sidewalk. I walked it, I studied it, we did a design, a full design on it. You approved a change order for it, and it does fit.
So the electrical poles, that would all be moved?
Yeah, the wires, they have clearances, it's safe, it's a distance away. You know, it's, we've studied it, and we did engineering drawings that the city engineer reviewed and approved. Thank you.
That was just a couple of comments I heard from moms with strollers. And when they looked over the iron fence, they see this bank of concrete where you could probably have three rows of chase lounges. And they said, why couldn't you have two rows in this spot and move that black fence back? So it was just a comment I thought at one point we'd have this discussion.
I can see that comment, but what you don't see is what's underground. And underneath there, there's all the piping and the, you know, the sanitary stormlines, and everything is under there. So we couldn't put the playground on top of those lines. So once again, they're up against each other. So what you don't see is everything that's in the ground, and it could not have been moved any further south. To get what we needed to support the pool is the primary objective. It's all underneath that paving. You can't put foundations and footers, and we had to adjust the playground around some of that as well.
Okay, that's an answer we'll give residents when they talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeJohn.
Mrs. Fagan, I see these numbers here. If I brought an independent auditor into the city to audit everything that was spent on this project, what do you think the final amount would be?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question of bringing an independent auditor. This is what they're projecting for the total, for the project, what I have sent to council periodically. And once these are addressed tonight by vote, I will update my spreadsheet and send that out. And that's the total amount that's been approved by this council for the project. We're right in line with each other there.
So will it be this $34 million, or will it be more?
There is the cost to issue to debt that is not on this line item. It's on the overall spreadsheet. But just to compare what we had at the time of GMP number four in July of '22, we didn't put those costs at that time either, but that would be applied either way. It's, that's a constant add on either end.
Correct, and as Jason mentioned just a little while ago, there may be some, a few small changes, moving things from contingency to the project coming up also. But that will be within that contingency on his spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions about this project? Everybody good? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for explaining everything to us this evening. At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mrs. Sabata, second by Mrs. Tressi. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This meeting has now been adjourned.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 13th council meeting of the city of Mayfield Heights. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Balastria.
Present.
Mr. DeJohn.
Here.
Mr. Mano.
Here.
Mr. Monaco.
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yeah, here.
Mrs. Tressi.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will move to the approval of the minutes from our October 23rd council meeting. I hope everyone has had time to read these minutes over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Mr. Balastria and second by Mrs. Tressi. Are there any suggested changes, deletions to these minutes? Mrs. Tressi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On page four, the second last paragraph under Resolution 2023-100, we have Mr. Mano move for suspension of the rules and he seconded, first and seconded. And on page five, the last two paragraphs, we have Mrs. Mano instead of Mr. Mano.
Okay. All right, we'll make those changes.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain from that. I was absent from the meeting. Does any member of council have any correspondence or announcements? Mr. Balastria.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. I would just like to congratulate Ms. Snyder, Ms. Talbot, and Mr. Minor on their recent elections to council, as well as the rest of the council, I'm sure, are looking forward to working with all of you and also to, congratulations to Mr. Lipton, even though he didn't win. Give kudos to anybody that throws their hat in the ring and wants to work for public service. So, congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monaco? No, you're good. All right. I would also like to take a minute and thank the voters of Mayfield Heights for coming out and voting this past election. I would like to thank each of you for the overwhelming votes that I received and the confidence that you have placed in me. I am proud to serve all of you for the next four years and I will continue to be your strong voice on council. We will miss those who will be leaving us, Councilwoman Tressi and Councilman Monaco, and we will welcome the two newly elected officials to office in January, Mrs. Kathy Talbot and Mr. King Minor. Just wanted to say thank you. Next, we will move to reports of officers, starting with the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Not to beat a dead horse, congratulations to the winners of this election, Kathy and King, and to Diane for her reelection. So, the Heritage Home Program, I just want to put a reminder out there to all of our older residents that this is a tremendous resource for you. Aside from equipment loan programs, meals on wheels, spring and fall yard cleanup, transportation program, there's a lot there for our residents. So, I remind them all to go onto our website, log into, well, not log into, click the CPA link, and you can get all of their programs there. And like I said, it's a tremendous resource for our residents. Also, another program I'd like to remind our residents of is the Heritage Home Program, which is a program of the Cleveland Restoration Society, and it offers low-interest loans to homeowners whose homes are 50 years or older, which is probably 80% of our homes in our city right now, maybe 75. This year, residents of our city receive nearly $70,000 to repair or upgrade their homes, and you can find their information on our website also. So, I just wanted to put that out there to our residents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor? Mr. Monaco?
I don't have a question for the mayor, but I have a statement. It is also another program that's along with the Heritage Loan Program. It's called the HELP Loan Program. That also applies to newer homes and also applies to rental properties. The interest rate is normally 3% at the going rates, and any resident can take advantage of that.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the law director, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of review of pending matters considered by council, I'm happy to note that in the fence dispute on Cedar Road, the Nunzios have put their fence into compliance with the city's ordinances, so that legislation is completed. With regard to Mr. Peyto on Kingswood, the court, Lynnhurst Municipal Court, ordered the city to come in and clean up the property outside of the residence today, and it's my understanding talking to Braden Thomas this afternoon that that has been done. So, the property has been cleaned up outside. We're still working on cleaning up the inside, but we're making progress. And finally, with regard to items, motions A and B on the agenda this evening regarding the CVS and the Popeyes, I spoke to the attorney for the developer who is here this evening, wants to make a brief presentation to council during the public portion of the meeting, and then would like council to vote on whether or not to approve the planning commission recommendation regarding the preliminary plan for the development this evening. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions? Mr. DeJohn?
Mr. Murphy, the Peyto property, what jurisdiction do we have for the inside of the house, since there's no point of sale unless they're selling the house?
Declaring it to be a nuisance and ordering the property owner to abate the nuisance, and if he doesn't do so, then it's up to the mayor to do so. That was all.
So, how would we know what's going on inside his house?
We've been in it.
I mean, my house could be a total wreck, and who would know that, other than people visiting?
Council has determined it to be a nuisance and has ordered the mayor to take steps to abate that nuisance.
It still doesn't make any sense to me, but...
Well, that was the resolution adopted by council.
Well, I know that. I really don't think council knew what they were voting on that time, so, but thank you.
Okay.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Director of Finance, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you. We have two major pieces of financial-related legislation on the agenda tonight. First of all, ordinance 2223-29, our changes to our municipal income tax code. The state of Ohio passed House Bill 33, which was the budget bill, and that made changes to the income tax laws. Regional Income Tax Agency, of whom we are a member, came up with proposed new wording to make sure that we're in line with that law, and those are the changes that are included in the legislation. Second is ordinance 2223-30, which is the budget for 2024. Obviously, it will be on for first reading tonight. We will have finance meetings to discuss that further. And as council goes through their binders and comes up with questions, I'd appreciate those ahead of time, whenever you have them, so that I can do some research and get you flushed out answers on any of your questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Fagan? Thank you. We will now move to reports of committees, committees, and boards, starting with the Building Committee, Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report, other than there'll be an upcoming committee meeting for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam President. No report.
Thank you. Public Works and Service, Mr. Balastria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No committee report, committee didn't meet, but council was copied this evening, or in the packet, on the minutes.
My, your mic.
I'm sorry.
Council has copied the minutes from the 10:13 meeting, and we just discussed the 2024 road program. I will be calling a meeting shortly to further talk about the 24 road program to pare down on the dollars requested by the committee to be in line with the budgeted dollars. So, we will have another Public Works meeting within the next few weeks. Okay? That's my report.
Thank you. Are you working on that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. or Mrs. Sabetta.
I'd like to ask Mr. Balastria a question.
Sure.
After reading the minutes...
Susan, can you talk closer?
This is better. After reading the minutes, I would like to ask you to rethink the Maplewood sidewalk extension. I was there today. The sidewalks need to be finished. That is a pedestrian walkway. It goes into a commercial park. I mean, there's children playing there. There are signs that one resident has up stating safety, slow down. It needs to be finished. They're walking in the streets. They're bringing their purchases in the street. They're riding their bikes in the street because the sidewalk ends, and it's very busy traffic. So, it's open to the pedestrians. So, I understand that you think there's no safety there, but there is a need for safety. I have pictures. Go and sit yourself.
I have.
Many, yeah, many times a day. They just stop. They take their strollers over the grassy knoll and go right across in.
I think one of the issues... Go ahead.
Go ahead. You had the comment. Go ahead.
Well, one of the issues that we discussed over there, because everybody was talking about it, was there's that wall, you know, the kind of, it's hard to see. So, they're afraid that if the sidewalk goes to the very end, the people will walk right out into that, because it's the sidewalk that ends right into the road. There's no crosswalk over there. So, I know that that whole area, I believe the chief was going to address that area. I think we talked about that in the email, about looking at that whole area, because it is dangerous over there. Maybe the configuration of stop signs, something has to happen, because it's a very busy corner.
Yes. It needs sidewalks. It needs crosswalks.
Right.
It doesn't have to go directly up to the wall. I'm sure a professional would figure it out. I know what you're saying. It can cross there.
Right.
And then the other sidewalk on the other side of the street can go in. But even crossing into, you know, Costco, it needs a crosswalk there.
Mr. Balastria?
No, we brought it up at the committee meeting, and we had Service Department there as well, and it was all agreed that the sidewalk on the north side of Maplewood comes up to that wall, and people would exit from behind the wall out into...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next, we will move to the approval of the minutes from our October 23rd Council Meeting. I hope everyone has had time to read these minutes over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Mr. Ballesteria and seconded by Mrs. Tressi. Are there any suggested changes, deletions to these minutes? Mrs. Tressi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On page four, the second last paragraph under Resolution 2023-100, we have Mr. Mano move for suspension of the rules and he seconded, first and seconded. And on page five, the last two paragraphs, we have Mrs. Mano instead of Mr. Mano.
We'll make those changes.
Thank you.
Are there any other changes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain from that. I was absent from the meeting. Does any member of council have any correspondence or announcements? Mr. Ballesteria.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. I would just like to congratulate Mrs. Snyder, Mrs. Talbot, and Mr. Minor on their recent elections to council, as well as the rest of the council, I'm sure, are looking forward to working with all of you and also to, congratulations to Mr. Lipton, even though he didn't win. Give kudos to anybody that throws their hat in the ring and wants to work for public service. So, congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monaco? No, you're good.
I'm good. Thank you.
I would also like to take a minute and thank the voters of Mayfield Heights for coming out and voting in this past election. I would like to thank each of you for the overwhelming votes that I received and the confidence that you have placed in me. I am proud to serve all of you for the next four years and I will continue to be your strong voice on council. We will miss those who will be leaving us, Councilwoman Tressi and Councilman Monaco, and we will welcome the two newly elected officials to office in January, Mrs. Kathy Talbot and Mr. King Minor. Just wanted to say thank you. Next, we will move to reports of officers, starting with the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Not to beat a dead horse, congratulations to the winners of this election, Kathy and King, and to Diane for her reelection. So, the Heritage Home Program, I just want to put a reminder out there to all of our older residents that this is a tremendous resource for you. You know, aside from equipment loan programs, Meals on Wheels, Spring and Fall Yard Cleanup Transportation Program, there's a lot there for our residents. So, I remind them all to go onto our website, log into, well, not log into, click the CPA link and you can get all of their programs there. And like I said, it's a tremendous resource for our residents. Also, another program I'd like to remind our residents of is the Heritage Home Program, which is a program of the Cleveland Restoration Society and it offers low-interest loans to homeowners whose homes are 50 years or older, which is probably 80% of our homes in our city right now, maybe 75. This year, residents of our city receive nearly $70,000 to repair or upgrade their homes and you can find their information on our website also. So, I just wanted to put that out there to our residents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor? Mr. Monaco.
I don't have a question for the mayor, but I have a statement. It is also another program that's along with the Heritage Loan Program. It's called the Help Loan Program. That also applies to newer homes and also applies to rental properties. The interest rate is normally 3% at a going rates and any resident can take advantage of that.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the Law Director, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of review of pending matters considered by council, happy to note that in the fence dispute on Cedar Road, the Nunzios have put their fence into compliance with the city's ordinances, so that legislation is completed. With regard to Mr. Peyto on Kingswood, the court, Lynnhurst Municipal Court, ordered the city to come in and clean up the property outside of the residence today. And it's my understanding, talking to Braden Thomas this afternoon, that that has been done. So, the property has been cleaned up outside. We're still working on cleaning up the inside, but we're making progress. And finally, with regard to items, motions A and B on the agenda this evening regarding the CVS and the Popeyes, I spoke to the attorney for the developer who is here this evening, wants to make a brief presentation to council during the public portion of the meeting and then would like council to vote on whether or not to approve the Planning Commission recommendation regarding the preliminary plan for the development this evening. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions? Mr. DeJohn.
Mr. Murphy, on the Peyto property, what jurisdiction do we have for the inside of the house? Since there's no point of sale and, you know, unless they're selling the house.
Declaring it to be a nuisance and ordering the property owner to abate the nuisance and if he doesn't do so, then it's up to the mayor to do so. That was all.
So, how would we know what's going on inside his house?
We've been in it.
I mean, my house could be a total wreck and, you know, who would know that, other than people visiting me?
Counsel has determined it to be a nuisance and has ordered the mayor to take steps to abate that nuisance.
It still doesn't make any sense to me, but...
Well, that was the resolution adopted by council.
Well, I know that. I really don't think council knew what they were voting on that time, so, but thank you.
Okay.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Director of Finance, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you. We have two major pieces of financial-related legislation on the agenda tonight. First of all, Ordinance 2223-29, our changes to our municipal income tax code. The Ohio, the state of Ohio passed House Bill 33, which was the budget bill, and that made changes to the income tax laws. Regional Income Tax Agency, of whom we are a member, came up with proposed new wording to make sure that we're in line with that law and those are the changes that are included in the legislation. Second is Ordinance 2223-30, which is the budget for 2024. Obviously, it will be on for first reading tonight. We will have finance meetings to discuss that further and as council goes through their binders and comes up with questions, I'd appreciate those ahead of time, whenever you have them, so that I can do some research and get you flushed-out answers on any of your questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Fagan? Thank you. We will now move to reports of committees, committees, and boards, starting with the Building Committee, Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report, other than there'll be an upcoming committee meeting for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam President. No report.
Thank you. Public Works and Service, Mr. Ballesteria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No committee report, committee didn't meet, but council was copied this evening or in the packet on the minutes.
My.
Oh, sorry. Council was copied on the minutes from the 10/13 meeting and we just discussed the 2024 road program. I will be calling a meeting shortly to further talk about the 24 road program to pare down on the dollars requested by the committee to be in line with the budgeted dollars. So, we will have another Public Works meeting within the next few weeks. Okay? That's my report.
Are you working on that now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr., oh, Mrs. Sabetta.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ballesteria a question.
Sure.
After reading the minutes.
Susan, can you talk closer?
Is this better? After reading the minutes, I would like to ask you to rethink the Maplewood sidewalk extension. I was there today. The sidewalks need to be finished. That is a pedestrian walkway. It goes into a commercial park. I mean, it, there's children playing there. There are signs that one resident has up stating safety, slow down. It needs to be finished. They're walking in the streets. They're bringing their purchases in the street. They're riding their bikes in the street because the sidewalk ends. And it's very busy traffic, so it opened, it's open to the pedestrians. So, I understand that you think there's no safety there, but there is a need for safety. I have pictures. Go and sit yourself.
I have.
Many, yeah, many times a day. They just stop. They take their strollers over the grassy knoll and go right across in.
I think one of the issues... Go ahead.
Go ahead. If you had a comment, go ahead.
Well, one of the issues that we discussed over there, because everybody was talking about it, was there's that wall, you know, the kind of, it's hard to see. So, they're afraid that if the sidewalk goes to the very end, the people will walk right out into that because it's the sidewalk that ends right into the road. There's no crosswalk over there. So, I know that that whole area, I believe the chief was going to address that area. I think we talked about that in an email, about looking at that whole area, because it is dangerous over there. Maybe the configuration of stop signs, something has to happen because it's a very busy corner.
Yes. It needs sidewalks. It needs crosswalks.
Right.
It doesn't have to go directly up to the wall. I'm sure a professional would figure it out. I know what you're saying. It can cross there.
Right.
And then the other sidewalk on the other side of the street can go in. But even crossing into, you know, Costco, it needs a crosswalk there.
Mr. Ballesteria.
No, we brought it up at the committee meeting and we had Service Department there as well and it was all agreed that the sidewalk on the north side of Maplewood comes up to that wall and people would exit from behind the wall out into the street. You'd also have to move that stop sign back to the wall and we know how people stop. They don't stop at the stop sign. If they were to just go past the stop sign, if you had it in line with that wall, they're going to run right into the pedestrian traffic. The other thing is, if you put that walk there, you're going to have to put an ADA ramp down there and you're telling people you can exit onto the street, but across the street is the island. It doesn't empty into the parking lot, per se. So, there's nothing to put a crosswalk to. On the south side, we didn't discuss that. That's somebody's public property at the time. But at the north, on the north side, it was decided it would be more of a safety hazard to put a walk there and force people to use it or tell people it's okay to use it when really it's not. I think it's unsafe. So, that's why the committee as a whole, with input from safety as well as our Service Department, agreed that it was not going to be a safe investment for the city to do, to put something there.
Mrs. Tressi. Mrs. Tressi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Also, our engineer was, of course, in the meeting and stated that it would be a safety hazard as well with the sidewalk on that side, on both sides. Without a crosswalk and without a sidewalk on the opposite side, which is Costco's property, there's a curb.
It's an island, yeah.
An island. There's no sidewalk there. So, our engineer actually thought it was a bad idea as well. So, we had the Service Department, the engineer, and the committee that discussed this.
I understand that. I read the minutes and I still believe there's something that should be done. It shouldn't be left the way it is. It shouldn't be a dead end.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
It sounds like it's something we need to take a closer look at. Maybe we change that intersection. Maybe we do something different there. Put a true crosswalk there with lights or, you know, flashing lights like we have on our cell. Maybe something like that, but, you know, it's something we got to look into more.
Right. But just to extend, the sidewalk currently.
Right.
It's a safety hazard.
And there's a, there's a stop sign there which...
Which would have to be moved.
Right, which would help us, I think, with the traffic. So, there's probably a way to maybe reconfigure it to make it safer.
And my second question.
Mrs. Sab, Mr. DeJohn.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm still trying to have the floor here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
My second question is, I brought this up many times, is the overpasses. If you'd please talk about some beautification for the overpass, both of them, Ridgeberry and Lander.
I'll bring it up again. We brought it up at the last, the last year's meeting, but I'm not sure if anything was completed on that and I'll talk to Service as well.
Thank you.
So many cities have, like, welcome to their city over the overpass, everywhere throughout Ohio. Would be nice if we could do that sometime in our city.
Like, you ever see Ashland?
Yeah.
It never happened.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabetta. Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if I should ask Mr. Ballesteria this, but we did approve a request for proposal for an engineering services and I don't know, I haven't heard anything, whether that's gone out or not. Do we know?
Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy.
The solicitation has been completed and it's my understanding it'll be sent out this week.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, moving to Recreation and Parks, Mr. Mano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The holiday lighting ceremony will be held on Wednesday, November 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the firebase. Enjoy a cup of hot cocoa, grab a sweet, and take pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus. Don't miss Santa and Mayor DeCicco as they count down to the lighting up of city.